Ready to rock and roll? Let's call a meeting to order. Chief, would you please lead us in the pledge?
At the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this wonderful day. We thank you for the February, thank you for the weather getting warmer. Thank you for all of our city staff and our city council. God, we ask that you will grant wisdom to the council and to the staff. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Roll call.
Counselor Howard?
Here.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Mayor Proten Segala?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
The court is declared with Counselor Lorenz, standing by video.
Modifications to the agenda?
Yes, we will be adding a G two B USDA grant.
I would move to approve the modifications to the agenda adding uh G two B USDA grant.
It's been moved and seconded to modify the agenda to add G two B USDA grant to the agenda. Is there any discussion? Lorna?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Proten Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve to add G two B USDA grant to the agenda.
Approval of the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three and approval of accounts payable. Don't move.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Lorna?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Proten Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Citizen comments and special presentations. Citizen comments. City welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meeting. Bob?
Yes, please. Please sign, there should be a pin there.
There is one. Bob Richards, KSLB Radio. And I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention the promotion that we started forty-eight hours ago, whereby we are on the air directing people to our websites to fill out a survey about the Valley Theaters that we've created. I have a research background in radio and wrote up a survey to see if I can't gauge specific likes, dislikes, price points for events, price points for concessions. And in forty-eight hours, we've had over a thousand people on the page and about fifteen or twenty percent of those have actually filled out the form. Nothing personal, Mr. Mayor, but I think a thousand people more than voted for you in twenty seventeen. So, so I think people care about the theaters. I guess it's a roundabout way of what I'm saying. So, I'm here to make you aware of that, but also to offer to the council and anybody else who wants to see the results, a presentation once I get them all to show you what I found. And if that's something you're all interested in, I'm happy to make that presentation, not just for you, but for anybody that wants to see it. I didn't really create this for any other reason than to really see if I can't get some information that even though it's not a scientific poll, it's as close as we can get without spending thousands of dollars. And so, I just want to offer that up to you guys if you think it's worthwhile.
Yeah, I would love to see it.
It'll take me, we're gonna have the poll up for a week. It'll take me a couple, three days to sift through all the results. And so, if you want to do it in this setting or in a work session, whatever you want, I'm happy to do that for you.
Okay.
All right?
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Any other citizen comments? Okay, we'll go on to scheduled appearances. In order to be included in this portion of the agenda, you have to fill out the proper paperwork with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. So, first discussion is discussion on the nepotism policy.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Judy.
How's everybody?
Very well, thank you, and yourself?
Good.
Good.
So, first of all, I wanted to let you know that over the next several months, I have the project of working with the directors and the city manager to revise our handbook with the hopeful of having an approval final draft to you by sometime in June. That being said, we've had an immediate request to discuss with you the nepotism policy. Your packet included the document with the current language as well as the proposed language. And the major change is that a qualified applicant who is related to a council member is treated the same as any other qualified applicant as long as they do not meet any of the three criteria mentioned. At this time, we'd like to propose that as an immediate change due to our issues with trying to recruit employee applicants, I guess, or increase the applicant pool. We are struggling to get especially police officers at this time. So, I believe Chief has done some research on this, if he'd like to chime in.
Yeah, I've actually, good evening, counsel. I've actually done a lot of research on this and specific to law enforcement. Talked with quite a few different agencies across the state and stuff. And nobody has one, but they have very strict supervision policies and stuff. And I will tell you from personal experience, I've lost in just the last year two really good applicants that were related to council members because they couldn't, they couldn't work here. So, when drafting this and talking with other agencies and stuff, I actually got their policies and I gave those to Judy and they're helping and writing this. You know, it really comes down to there's quite a few layers in between council and by the time it, you know, there's council, there's city manager, there's me, there's supervisors. So, and I, having worked in an agency where there was a lot of, my wife, both my wife and I worked for State Patrol, we just had different supervisors. So, I think, I totally understand the intent of the policy and why it's in place. And I think in best world situations, that would, that makes sense. But we are in a hiring struggle nationwide, I think, in every industry, not just law enforcement, where it is very, very tough to find applicants. I'm basically five officers down out of a sixteen-person department. And I know there's applicants that are, are or, I don't know if they're still interested, but that were related to council members in the past. And I just, to me, it's just more about we have good policies in place, we have good rules in place. And personally, I mean, I hold everybody to the exact same standard. I don't care who they work for, what they look like, or anything like that. So, for me, it's just, but we can't hire a lot of people because, and I don't think that it's only for me, I think that's for, you know, Robbs Crews and stuff like that, if they're related to anybody on council. And I guess the way I also look at it is council comes and goes. They're, they come and go where the majority of us stay. So, I guess that's just kind of my two cents. Again, I, I talked with, I got Vale PD's policy, I got Avon PD's policy, the Mountain Village Police Department, as well as we actually have within our own policy within the police department about supervising, like I have two brothers that worked for me at one time. And they, we just put them on opposite sides of shifts so that they couldn't, one was a supervisor, one isn't, just have them on opposite sides of the shift so that there's no favoritism or anything like that. They're not involved in evaluations or anything like that. So, that's my two cents on it.
Do you feel comfortable, 'cause I want to ask, I want to ask this question, but I don't know if you can answer it or not. Just being really honest with us and telling us, what are we facing if we don't get some more police officers?
Well, I mean, we're already at, I would say we're already well past critical, critical staffing. Right now, you know, we need to have two officers on duty at a time. And right now, we're, everybody's pretty much working twelve-hour shifts, me included. You know, we, when I come in and cover shifts on the weekends or whatever, we're just at, we are beyond, we're already past critical staffing levels. It's extremely hard to maintain the level of service that we are and try and cover the shifts twenty-four seven. Because there's only two agencies currently in the valley that are twenty-four seven, Elmo's PD and Montavista PD. None of the other agencies are, you know, they have on-call and stuff. I'm just, for a municipal government like this and the size that we are, I, Gigi has suggested that and I have fought back and pushed back at this point because I just don't think that that is a good service to, you know, and I'll put it bluntly, criminals will get to work, hey, there's nobody on these hours, right? And I'm not willing, we're making sacrifices and working, everybody's working twelve-hour shifts and I've been working four-twelves. So, yeah, we're, we're beyond critical.
I just, I just wanted not to be on all the recordings and is that we are
That's a, that's a good question. That's a, that's a good question.
And if, again, anything I ask that you're not comfortable answering?
Oh, no, I'll answer pretty much.
Well, but there may be things that shouldn't be said. What happens when a police officer gets burned out? What are some of the possibilities?
I mean, there's, I mean, we're, I mean, there's so many things, but
They're tired.
Yeah, we, I mean, first off, you worry about their safety, right? Making a poor mistake or a poor decision or a bad mistake or something like that. But we've, we've done some things to, to address that. You know, like some mental health awareness and there's actually bills that were passed specifically for that. But even with that, you still worry about burnout. I worry about burnout for myself, you know, you, I come and do my regular job and then still cover shifts and stuff like that. So, yeah, I mean, there's, there's always that, but you may have to work, shift work that bill for them.
Well, I have every, every confidence that you're doing everything you can to make sure the officers are in great shape, you know, but we can't run the wheel so long. And I just, I just kind of like, when people view this on YouTube, I wanted that to be something that they understand when people hear that, but
Yeah, you know, as far as supervising and stuff like that, I, I've been supervising a lot of years and when you stick to your policies, rules and procedures, doesn't matter who it is. I mean, I've unfortunately been involved with some personality issues that I hated, but you still always do what's right, doesn't matter who it is. So, I guess that's my take on it.
Thank you.
I might let you know that we have had several interviews with recruits from the academy. Obviously, some pretty good interviews actually, but those won't be able to come on until end of May at the earliest, and then training is another issue. We just don't even have enough officers to train them all. So, it's just a long process of trying to get police officers.
So, I know that at one point, I had a family member, you know, apply and because of the nepotism, they weren't allowed, you know, and I, exactly what Chief was, had said, mentioned earlier was, you know, council comes and goes, you know, these guys make a career out of what they're doing, you know? And I even, it came across my mind and I talked to my wife and her sister and I was like, considering even myself, just like, hey, you know, maybe I'll just step down. Know what I mean? Like a step down so that way she can have an opportunity to live out her dream. Know what I mean? Because like that's what she's always wanted to do. She's an officer in Quinellos County right now, you know, but so that, that's kind of like, if you can kind of get how I feel about it, know what I mean? Like, but still, I would gladly remove myself from this vote just because of that, you know?
Well, to your point, not only were you willing to step down for, to, for her to pursue what she wanted to do, but when do we get to a point, this is Montavista? We're all related, one way or the other. There's a, there are so few people in this town that if, and when you consider all the city departments that, that were over, that means we can't hire anybody for kids connection, counter animal shelter, you know, just all, all these different things. So, how, so when, when do we get to the point that we all have to step down and Montavista doesn't have a council anymore, just so we can have a police department? You know, when does, when does that, when do we hit, when do we hit that tilt? Right now, things are way out of line and we've got to find a way to get them back in.
Well, we've also had people that applied, because when Lauren came aboard, who has relative working for the city and he wouldn't jeopardize that as well. He didn't want to interfere with what his son does.
Right.
So, I can kind of stand up here with Victor in regards to the position and why this probably part of it came up. But I will tell Victor, don't excuse yourself from this because it's not directed totally toward the police department, it's a city in whole.
Exactly.
So, anybody, you know, you might have a nephew or somebody that wants to go to work for the parking wreck or public works and because of that policy, they're not allowed to, but you have nothing to do with that. Like Chief said, it's really deep. I mean, you got their supervisor, then chief, then Gigi and HR. If we're out of the loop on that. So, I think it's important because it is. Kind of like Martha said, it's a small community and there's a lot of people that are related one way or the other that would take upon that opportunity, but because of that, they
Hello, I have something to say.
Yes, sir.
So, this would be a solution to our immediate problem, but down the road, it opens up a whole can of worms that I don't think we should go down. These rules are here for a purpose, especially in a small town. And you're right, council comes and goes and we may have the best intentions with this and three of us get voted out and all of a sudden, City Hall becomes the place where relatives are hired and it sets a bad precedent, especially, frankly, especially in the police department. We don't want any question of how our officers got their jobs, whether it's just by appearance or fact. Because I don't think, how would you feel if your son, because one of the problems we have is there will be repercussions down the road where someone gets reprimanded? And how do you want, how do you think Gigi would feel if her next evaluation's coming up and they just had to let, you and Victor just talked about having relatives that have applied and they've just had to let that employee go? Do you think that's fair to the other employees and staff? That these rules are here for a reason and yeah, it's a pain in the butt and it's an added hoop that people have to jump through, but it's for the protection of everybody else in the city. It's a shortcut if we try to cut by it and just make it easier just because we have an immediate need.
I think that we can, I think that we have a fantastic staff right now. I agree with Counselor Lorenz's, councils come and go, staffs come and go. Right now, we've got a great staff and I believe we have a great council. So, right now is the time that we could make this change and write the policies in such a way that in future years, it can't be abused. As far as the example of Ms. Dennis's review coming up and she's just had to fire someone or chastise somebody, that's going to be tough. I can see where it could be, but if the policies are written correctly and written thoroughly, then whoever, whoever's relative got busted at or fired is still one of five. So, if I got mad at you for something, just don't make us all mad sometimes, that's all. No, I'm teasing, but in seriousness, so what if I get mad? I've gotten mad at hospitals before and we've all survived.
What takes is three different council members and it changes the entire complexion of the board. You get three in agreement, it could, you could go down a dark road with this.
You're right, and if we, if we come to a point in the town, in time, that we have three should say it, corrupt, selfish-thinking counselors on this board, then it's time to start looking at counselor recalls at that point. It's not, that's not about nepotism. That's about counselors not knowing how to put their personal feelings aside and do what is best for the city of Montavista.
But that's why you want to have protections in place, such as our current guidelines that prevent those things from happening.
Right now, we have, I know at least there's one set of brothers on our, on our police staff, that's right now. Center actually has twins on their police board, on their police force, and they work together as partners. I've actually been there, seen that. It was a little odd, but
But specifically, what we're looking at changing is the relationship with city council.
Right.
Correct.
I'd like to jump in here and just ask a couple of questions and weigh in a little bit. Be straight up with this, and I'm probably more on this side with Jason. It's hard for me to conceive of where the council is, is this, has no vested interest in what happens, is this independent, unbiased body of personnel issues. I understand that employment is a challenge. I mean, I don't care what business you're in, we're in that same business. I, I have a lot of experience on that issue personally and employment-wise. I've seen it go bad where, you know, there've been relationships that have caused significant problems. Again, I think we're only talking about council. I'm not, you know, I'm not talking about, you know, Rob Vance has a child and wants to work at somewhere that's not in line with supervision. I got no issue with that personally. I would like to ask the question because it's my understanding that Colorado law prohibits discrimination in the husband and wife. And I'd like to ask the attorney to maybe look at that. What I read on, in the area of human resources is that Colorado law prohibits anybody from discriminating between a husband and wife. So, again, I'm not sure that applies to council, but it could. So, I don't know, I'd like to see if, you know, if that, if the attorney would concur with that not understanding of Colorado law and employment matters.
Do you want me to respond to that or?
So, it would be, if, if I was to consider this change, I think that I would like to see language in the proposed policy that at least explicitly talks about councils' independence of personnel matters. It says, you know, it's clear that a council has no responsibility, authority to take no action or whatever, you know, against personnel matters. That, you know, specifically talks as council is out of it. You know, Gigi says, you know, this person doesn't work here. It's an employee of, or a family member of a council person, that it's clear that, you know, council has no right, no authority to take any action on that or opinion on that. Just, just to be clear, I mean, trying to figure out a way to accommodate, from my personal point of view, accommodate the situation that we're in. You know, it's hard to hire anybody, I get it. You know, I was chatting with the chief earlier today and I, you know, we all want a great police force. Who doesn't? So, I'm trying to work my way around to a situation where I could support the kind of concept of having family members that might be related to the council. I mean, ultimately, the responsibility of the city rests with the council. I mean, day-to-day operations are Gigi and law enforcement is with Chief Dingfelder. You know, but in the end, when things are bad, it comes here. I mean, we're charged with being responsible for the city. So, it's hard to walk away from that for me. But if we could look at some language, maybe, that explicitly talks about that, you know, maybe I could wrap my head around it personally, but I'm one counselor on this board, on this council.
Just, if I can, just have another minute real quick. So, the nepotism, I totally get. It's, it could be absolutely terrible. And just speaking from experience because I'm actually, you know, like I've been employed by a place where it's dad, son, daughter, you know? And then the manager, her daughter, her friends, her boyfriend, know what I mean? And I'm like, so, when, you know, like when it gets to a certain point, then it's, it can be absolutely horrible. But at the same time, you know, like, like just me, for example, I have friends that are closer than I have family, you know? So, like, what if these friends were to try to get a job over here? It's like, I feel more strongly towards these friends than I do some of my family members, know what I mean? Also, just things that have happened in the past. You know, like when I first got on council, like, I'm from here, know what I mean? Like I know so many people and when I got on council, I had, I think, three police officers show up at my house. And they started telling me stuff that was going on in the forest. And I'm like, uh, hold on here. Forest, know what I mean? Because like it's not my place to, you know what I mean? Like at all, so like, I did the first thing that we were instructed as council members when we first came in was, don't be involved with city staff, don't be involved in their day-to-day operations. Leave them alone, don't, don't be involved whatsoever, know what I mean? So, like, I'm like, all right, done, not, not one thing. I have, I have a little nephew, know what I mean? That gets involved with the police and they've arrested him and sent him to detox. How, how many times? They're like, oh, Orlando's in detox. They're like, oh, Orlando's in detox again, oh, he's in detox again. And I'm like, shh, but like not once have I ever came to chief and been like, hey, what's going on? Hey, know what I mean? Like I haven't talked to anybody about it because it's not my place, know what I mean? And and that's like, you know, like I could easily be like, hey, what's going on? Like, hey, what, you know what I mean? But I, it's just, I I know my place, I'm I'm not like, you know, I'm a representative of the city. I, the last thing I want to do is make us look bad, know what I mean? And like, you know, like, I I know, I know, like, for me, um, I've worked with my wife. I've seen people work, you know, in the nepotism and and I do feel like it's it it can be absolutely devastating and terrible. But I also believe that we have excellent staff, you know, and attorneys and people that have have been in places of authority that understand that. And I believe they also have the city in their best interests as well, or else they probably wouldn't be here, you know? So I'm me, I I'm honestly kind of torn, know what I mean? Because like I I I don't like the nepotism because like I've been in involved in it, I've seen it and the whole, like you guys said, the whole valley's related, so like you really can't go one place and be like, oh, that's my cousin. Especially me because I have, you guys don't even know. I have so much family, ridiculous, know what I mean? So like, it it's so hard, know what I mean? Like, like I said, for me, I'm like torn because like I I know me personally, I would not get involved, know what I mean? Because like, that's my place, it's right here, not to be involved in any of this.
Do we have a, does the city have a ethics policy? You gave me a, I'm talking to Gigi, you gave me a book in CML, talk about ethics on city council and public elected officials. Do we have a policy on ethics for council?
For county, yes, we do.
And is 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 it signed by council members?
Need is it signed?
I don't believe it was in ordinance.
So I, to Jason's point, in playing the the devil's advocate, um, while Nita looks that up. I think what Jason's trying to get to is the public perception. All five of you are smart. You're, you've detached yourself from the issues, you know? You've told me that's your job and we're not gonna worry about it. But the perception is, is that the public isn't going to view it. Some aren't gonna view it that way. And they're, they don't attend the meetings. It all goes on social media. And so, and that's the side that we can't win is the social media stuff. We can put as much honest factual information out there and people are gonna believe what they want to believe. And so when um, the chief came and talked to Judy and I about this, I struggled with wanting to agree with it myself. And I reached out on the CML managers listserv to say what, what are some of your, you know, the opinions? And quite a few said, don't do it. And quite a few said, we've done it and it's worked out fine. And it was from all different sizes of populations. And so I really think it's a, it's a matter of a flip of a quarter. If you guys do it, you're gonna get, there's gonna be people that are upset. If you don't do it, there's gonna be people that are upset. We do not have. We've got a, we've got good applicants. We don't have applicants that maybe their best skill set fits with what we need within the city. And so, and it's not just the police department, it's other departments as well. And so we are just trying to look at, you know, you are five individuals that may have um, other suggestions and people that you can point to come and apply. Right now, the chief has a grant that is offering a sign and sign on bonus. That hasn't worked out, well, we haven't had a, that hasn't brought more people through the door. He has a, part of this grant allows for one of his police officers to receive a bonus if they bring a recruit and the person is hired. So far, that hasn't brought us any more people yet. And so we're just trying to to weed through this and how do we um, bring about the safety of our officers currently? Because they're putting in a lot of overtime. They are tired. If one more decides, hey, I'm gonna take my vacation, which they all, we all need vacations, that just leaves us then with one less person for a few days or a week or whatever. Um, if one leaves on maternity leave, that impacts us. And so we're just trying to find a way that we can get our arms around this and and have a little larger pool of people to draw from without impacting who's related to who. And you're right. I mean, Jason brings up a good point. If not all council members are gonna look at it as as pragmatically as you guys have and saying, you know what, that's that's the chief's and the city manager's job, they need to to do this. It's hard sometimes for some people to say, you just fired my my Johnny and by golly, we're gonna just create a mess out of city council.
I'm not saying that's impossible. I'm not saying that it couldn't happen in five, ten years. We sit here as human beings, and I'm just gonna talk to you like human beings. We can't write the perfect policy. We can't make the perfect laws. We're not God, we can't do that. We just can't. So anything we do, somebody is always going to find a way to go, well, that wasn't right or some, you know, somebody's gonna be upset about it. And we're gonna have to learn how to be okay with people being upset. As far as the public perception goes, we have lots of ways in this town to educate our public. I wish they would come to the meetings and gosh, I hope there's some people that are gonna hear this YouTube. And if you do hear it and you get mad at me, please get mad at me really good and spread it around so that you'll hear this. I wish people would come to this meetings, these meetings, but they don't. They'll read the paper. We have an information source sitting right back there, if you still hear, um, our radio station. We have several podcast companies, yes, I own one of them. But we don't have to use mine, we can use any of them. We can use any of them. We can get the information out there so that when the gossips and the rumor mongers and the naysayers on social media start the crap, no one has to respond to that with anything other than a link. Here's the truth. Now, the people that are open minded, the people that truly care and love Montavista will go and and look at that and they may still have questions. But there'll be a number, there'll be an email, there'll be something where you can answer those questions. The people that are all that are gonna continue to complain, continue to rumor monger, continue to gossip, we can't do anything with them and I'm not talking to them anyway. That's just the false truth.
Is there some, is it practical, I'll ask that question that way. Is it practical? I'm trying to find a way through rather than say techno. I understand the situation. You know, it's hard to hire people. Is there a way to essentially say to limit the number of employees you could have? I mean, is that a practical solution? So, you know, somebody doesn't get in there and say, okay, we can hire Johnny and you can hire Sally and oh, by the way, I got this nephew over here, you can hire that person too. I I don't know if that's legal, I don't know if that's practical or not, but it just covers some of the issues I think we talked about a little bit. And the and the other thing, I think in the end, I I think I'd like to hear from the city manager where she stands.
So I I think this is, and and I totally agree with what Council Lorenz says because I I struggle even bringing this to um, to Gigi because I I I believe that it can be abused. But I think the one, the one reason that I, one, the research I did with other agencies. And then the other one, if you read our current policy, if we already have somebody that's working here and you get elected, like if your if your son worked here or your sister in law or your, somebody already worked here, they can stay working here and um, and you can get elected to it and they can stay employed. So I guess that's where I was like, what's the difference?
Right.
You know what I mean? And because that's currently in the policy that if.
And I don't have that section in here, can I go for it? Is it there?
Yeah, it is. Employee's been working for the city for at least one year and a relative is elected to city council or becomes an appointed official, the employee will be allowed to continue his or her employment with the city. I, to me, that was kind of the thing, I'm like, okay, what's? I so.
What's the difference?
Yeah.
Thank you, George.
And this is pertaining to only council, right? It's not like, like within the city staff. It's just city council and employees of the city. I mean, the city council and employees of the city.
You know, I put a lot of thought in this because I I, when I first saw this, when I first started, I'm like, God, that absolutely makes a lot of sense and stuff. And then you, when you really start breaking it down and you look at some of the different little neon nuances and stuff with it, you're like, eh, does it really make sense? And then, you know, talking to others around the state and stuff, I I mean, the the one that I found, I I don't know that I would go that far or agree with it, but Mountain Village Police Department, the deputy chief is married to one of the officers. Now granted, it's not related to council, but I'm still like, how does, how does that work? You know what I mean? I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that because ours is pretty strict, you can't supervise a relative, so.
Well, and I can, I can understand that. I mean, you get in a life and death situation and your son's in trouble or your or your other officer's in trouble.
But what I think that that goes on any, for any industry within the city, whether it's down in Sky High or Rob's people or or wherever, I think that's just kind of the same stuff. I don't know, that those were, because believe me, I I I I, as Council Lorenz is talking, I'm sitting there going, this, he's absolutely right, that's why it's in place is, because it may, and and to his point, it may be good now, but we don't know what's gonna happen with the next council or whoever. And that's always the, the struggle, right? Is how you, like, uh, Council Howard said, that's why you write something in there and stuff if you're going to agree to it. If not, I mean, I, I gotta be honest, I'm, I'm on the fence with it myself. But as Gigi said, it's kind of, we can't, we've tried, we're, we've tried pretty much everything we can to recruit and bring people in and we're just at a point where, I mean, and I wish I could say that it was only me because then it'd be an easy fix. I would leave because it means it'd be my problem, but this is, this is nationwide law enforcement as well as a lot of under other industries, so I I guess my point is, is that you have to give everything a shot if it doesn't work. But at least we tried something.
What about, so like right now, we're facing this situation and that's why we're, you know, conversating about this. So what if like, four years down the road or five years down the road? Like, hey, there's, you know, ma- maybe my sister in law was hired. Maybe she wasn't, but maybe she's still employed at that time. And there's other five officers, so now you're fully staffed. And could there, could we go back and change that and be like, hey, well, we're just gonna change that back? Know what I mean? Like I I just, I don't know.
I don't know, I think that's what we're about.
I think any council could change something back.
My understanding is that this, this was changed, at least Nita thought, not too long ago. But it used to be not in here, so.
That would have been within the last four years. What, right?
Correct.
Mayor, Mayor Becker's administration and Doc and Doctor. Mayor Vertam Sagala, I believe y'all, that y'all, that that administration is, when the four of you were elected or the three of you were elected, you and and Gary, y'all put in place this council, just just to put it in layman's terms, not gonna be messing around with personnel. As long as council doesn't mess around with personnel, then I think, I think we got it covered. Now, a future council could could come in and, yeah, they could say, we we wanna be able to 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 be involved with personnel. And we can't stop them from doing that. We can't stop them from doing that.
But we can set the standard for now that says this is not appropriate conduct. And this is where we stand. And anyone can change it in the future. But if we set the standard now, at least it's out there, this is what we believe. We didn't take a shortcut because we were having hard times, because we are, because more hard times are gonna come. And what are we gonna change then? What if we change this and now, well, we still don't get the applicants we need? What are we gonna change next? What are we willing to give up in our rules just to make it easy?
I don't think anybody's looking to make it easy. It hasn't been easy on anyone. It hasn't been easy on any of our staff. What are we gonna change now? We're gonna change what we have to change. Change is inevitable.
But what rules are you willing to give up, Martha?
Excuse me?
What rules are you willing to give up? This one doesn't bother you. What's the next one you're willing to give up just to make it easy?
That situation hasn't been presented to me yet and I don't have my crystal ball with me tonight, I'm very sorry.
That's why you set standards that you're not willing to change because they are important. Those rules are important because there will be something else that comes up that's hard. And if you don't have any compass to go by, it's easy to get blown back and forth and change the rules as you see fit at the time. And the good intention, the road to hell is paved with good intentions.
I I understand that, Council Lorenz, I I really do. And and I'm not in complete disagreement with you. What I'm saying is that yes, we set the standards now. The standard is already set, it's already there. That's already done. The standard has been set for council doesn't get involved with the personnel issues. That's already done for this. What do we change in the future? It really depends on what the future brings us. And yes, we have to have a, a standard of right and wrong and that's both a personal thing and a professional thing. You know, I I I don't think that I will ever decide that it's gonna be okay to break into somebody's house and steal from them. You wanna know, you wanna know some, you know, just, you wanna know something that I I don't think is okay? I don't think that's okay and I don't think it's ever gonna be okay. However, if my child is starving and Armageddon has come and the town is burning and I see a house that I think might have some milk in it, I might do that.
What's?
That would, but that would be an extreme situation and I think that that's what you're talking about, Council Lorenz, is is you're, you're, you're bringing in situations that haven't happened yet that might never happen.
Let's stay focused on the.
This is the situation here, right? This is the situation that we have right here, right now.
Gigi, I would like your input.
So, like I said, it it, it took me a while to come around to the whole idea. And George and Judy and I met several times and bantered it back and forth and and um, and then when I reached out and read where some of the other city council or managers have said, you know, it's worked out okay. And and we did make the change. So that's when I agreed to, we'd bring this forward and have a lively discussion.
We did that.
Jean, Jean, you've looked at this and we all look. I mean, I'm gonna point right now to table this discussion till we can have a little more. I mean, I'm gonna point right now to table this discussion till we can have a little more talk on it, so we're not taking the whole week.
I'll, I'll be glad to give you some input if you want it.
Why don't you right now and then we can talk about this?
I'd like to make the motion that the issue before us be tabled.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Been moved in second, the week tabled this discussion till a later date for a work session. Is there any more discussion?
Tablely required discussion.
What's that?
Table motion doesn't allow discussion.
Loretta, Anita, whoever's taking the vote, let's vote.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
Nay.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries with four yays and one nay with Counselor Locke voting nay.
Set up a late session for that.
Absolutely. A lot of our. Things that take us too long are self-inflicted. We need to make decisions.
USDA grant.
So I asked Rob to come up and, and join me as we talk about USDA rule development, and this has to do with the loan and the grant. For the wastewater treatment plant. And you all have worked on this for a few years. And we know it's inevitable. We applied for a planning grant through Department of Local Affairs. And we were successful in that and got that, those funds awarded at the end of December. So we could begin to push the process forward. And I think that that. For some reason was all we needed to suddenly to get some action out of USDA. So they, um, the loan. The amount of the project is a little over thirty million dollars. They, they, meaning USDA. The maximum grant that they receive in Colorado is a little over four million. And so they went back to the national office to finesse this and say they need more grant in order to make this happen. The grant came in at nine million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. So that leaves a balance of pretty close to twenty million dollars that we need a loan on. USDA also does not loan more than ten million at a time. So we will be taking out two ten million dollar loans with them. It's for forty years. The interest rate is, the interest rate is locked in at two point two five percent. And if by chance the rate goes down, we will get the lower rate. In the interim, we have to find another funder that will. Get, get, provide us the interim financing. Until the plant is substantially built, in which we actually close on the loan. So they said we could go and look elsewhere. The finance institution that Councilman Howard. And maybe Councilman Lorenz and, and myself are familiar with is Cobank. And so, um, and apparently they do a lot of these. We are gonna take them up on a, um. An offer that they made that they will. We can have a technical assistance advisor to review our rates. Now, Rob had already done a rate study in the past. You all had passed, um, three years. Of rate increases that started back in July of twenty twenty-two. Since then. The payback on the loan was figured at a maximum of sixty-five dollars for the. Base rate. This loan amount is figured at seventy dollars. So it's a little bit higher. Now. We are, um, learning, we're gonna continue to be searching out other grant funds that we can have. We've got to better understand from USDA that if we get o- other grant funds, that it actually goes towards the principal. And it just doesn't reach, reduce their grant. So we've got a big, a big project to take on. Now. I don't know that they expected me to sign off on the letter today. But I said, I'm not signing this letter till I take it to council. This is not a Gigi decision. I'm not signing off on twenty million dollars.
USDA?
USDA, they gave us notice yesterday afternoon, wanted to meet with us this morning at seven. Asked us to sign the thirty million dollar document today.
Who, who, who was coming, if I might ask?
Who was coming? It was with Tenille this morning.
Borrows, Tenille Borrows, she's, yeah.
USDA?
Yeah, but she's local.
She's our local rep.
And so she walked us through the whole document, it's several. Twenty-some pages of things that we have to do or not do or get permission first and, and all of that. And now she says it is critical that we sign this and we will have to get it to them tomorrow. Because then something kicks in on the federal side and we will have to. Uh, fall under the Buy American Only Act.
So right now, the way it currently stands, there's an option for us not to have to accept the Buy American. So concrete and other items that have been historically under. Previous administrations under the Buy American and have to have the certificates. We can source under this program with this deadline, which is kind of ridiculous, but with this deadline. They can be sourced anywhere, we can get it, which will, it will give us some cost savings. And with a project of this nature, it is, any, any dime, nickel, penny we can save. Is worth it, so, um, but it doesn't give us a lot of time to really think about it.
And so what the, the loan is for, it's to develop the lift station that we're gonna have to have. The collection station and then the Henderson sludge cleanup.
Does it rebuild the treatment plant still?
Yeah, it actually makes, yeah, it's for the construction of the plant.
What kind of technology are we gonna do?
So we're looking at, um, activated sludge plant as far as doing something, um. We haven't quite determined exactly what treatment process we're looking at yet. But it'll be a newer treatment process that hopefully will carry us through the next forty years as long as we're financed. So it's not, I'm not looking at an RBC or anything like that, more like, um. Some of the new technologies that's accepted through the state, kinda like what they just did in Center. We have a, if you would like, we have our kickoff meeting on Monday. If you have the ability to attend, I would be more than happy to have you do that. It's a Zoom, I can send you the invite.
Yeah, we can send it to all of you. You wanna listen.
The time is a meeting.
It's at, um, it's one to three.
At what?
One to three.
One to three, our mountain time?
Yes, yeah, it's a Zoom meeting.
Send it to me.
I make a motion. Prove the city manager signed the loan agreement.
I'll have to check, see what.
Second.
Well, it, it doesn't matter.
Been moved and seconded to approve, uh, the agreement and have the city manager sign it. Is there any more discussion?
I'll, I'll wish it better luck than I have with the USDA.
I know. It's a very cumbersome agency to work through. Yeah, Ben has done that.
Working on it right now.
So if you wanna look at some of the technology, look at a company like Aeromod, take a look at their website, that's kind of the technology we're looking at.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the USDA grant allowing city manager Gigi Dennis to sign the loan, or loan, sorry.
Okay, um. Move on to license and liquor renewals, tasting. Tasting for Park Avenue Liquor and MTV Southwest Liquor. I couldn't forget tasting. Okay, let's go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, before you, um, it was brought to me last week. We have two liquor stores in town that would like to participate in tasting. So I went back and looked through our code and, believe it or not, our code actually does allow for tasting beverages. Authorized under section four two one thirty. Um, it allows for city authorizes, allows alcohol beverage tasting for licensed retail liquor stores. And liquor licensed drug stores within the city. The city shall not require further application prior to allowing a liquor retail license to. Beverage tastings and elects not to impose additional limitations on the tastings. So I did reach out to some of my counterparts and ask them, how do they handle that? I explained to them the whole process that our code says, and. The State Liquor and Tobacco Division highly recommend that we do an application. No cost to the application, but an application that would lay out. Their tasting schedule, and if you look in your package, um, a general alcohol beverage tasting, general information. Um, basically, one of the big things is tasting shall not exceed a total of five hours during a duration, duration per, per day. Which would not allow earlier than eleven AM and no later than nine PM for tasting within the liquor stores. So, um, I proposed to council this evening and I'm asking for the go-ahead to. Not charge the liquor stores to fill this out, but to have them follow the guidelines. Of the State Liquor and Tobacco Division. That, uh, that's where I've got these guidelines from, was from the State Liquor and Tobacco.
Southwest liquor, liquors, I can say, I wanna taste that first.
I guess there's a lot of new, um, liquor that's out there. Whiskey is one of them that. The wholesalers bring in and the wholesalers actually have tasting schedules set up with the liquor stores. And in your packet is the application that I put together. And the schedule of events, um, just so that we can keep track, and like I said, these did come from. The State Liquor and Tobacco Division.
Is, is this nominally public consumption of liquor or alcohol?
Yes.
Sure, I understand. Chief's good.
I would move to, um, allow the tasting for Park Avenue Liquor and MTV Southwest Liquor, not charging them a fee, but having them abide by. The guide.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the tasting for Park Avenue Liquor and MTV Southwest Liquor. With no charge to the fee of. Permit and abide by all the state liquor laws. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the tasting. Application and guidelines for Park Avenue Liquor and MTV Southwest Liquor to have tasting within their facilities.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinances. Second and final reading of ordinance nine one seven and ordinance of the city of Montevista repealing article twenty of. Chapter twelve, reenacting article twenty as a sign, as signs and murals. Mr. Andrew.
So, uh, as last time, we're just gonna do it by title only. So, uh, this is a second reading to, for ordinance nine one seven and ordinance of the city of Montevista repealing. Article twenty of chapter twelve, reenacting article twenty as signs and murals. That's all.
Need a motion?
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Ordinance nine seventeen and ordinance of the city of Montevista repealing article twenty of chapter twelve. Reenacting article twenty as signs and murals. Is there any more discussion? Loretta?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz? Mayor Portem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance nine seventeen.
Thank you. Contracts and agreements, agreement and invoice for air conditioning for Kids Connection.
Yes, so at a couple of work sessions, we discussed the, um. That we had gotten bids for air conditioning in Kids Connections building. Uh, it does not have any windows that open, and so during the summer months, it gets quite. Hot and stale and you've got eighty kids running around, and so Anika tries to keep them out as much as possible. But she, the best bid that we received was from Hussman Plumbing. And we got this bid. Few months ago and gave them a conditional nod that we were moving forward on this. And so we need, I'm asking for approval for the initial down payment, which is thirty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And we're paying for this through capital dollars that have been set aside. Specifically for Kids Connection, and then. I'm hoping that you all decide the other half will come out of our. American Rescue Funds dollars when we sit down and have a discussion in, in how we're gonna pay for that. And if you say you don't wanna spend our, our dollars on it, then we've got. We would take it out of our city.
What was the total on that again? I'm sorry.
It's about sixty-three thousand dollars. And we had to have, we brought in a, um, an architect to test. The strength of the ceiling because these will be five. One thousand pound roof mounted units, and so.
Are these straight, uh, air conditioning units versus like a heat pump?
Correct, yes.
Tomo?
Second. Thank you.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agreement and invoice for the air conditioning unit for Kids Connection. Is there any more discussion? Loretta?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Locke? Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Segola?
Yay.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve air conditioning for kids connection bid to Hussman Plumbing.
Award the IHOP grant proposal?
I like how you got all excited about spending money. Okay, so you guys should have, did they get the paper copy? Of staff report?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys should have a paper copy of the staff report. We closed the RFP on the twenty-third for the IHOP grant. We had six people or six firms that submitted proposals. All but one were inside the dollar amount allowed. That one exceeded by about eleven thousand dollars. We did still evaluate that company. And if they would have ended up on top, we would have had to have a conversation about, you know, if they would come down and meet what the grant total was. I had the planning and zoning commission and myself, we all reviewed it using the criteria that was set out in the RFP. And K L J engineering was ranked the highest by majority of them. Most of ranked them as number one, they were either one or two, depending on a couple of small things. So their, their public engagement was really the, probably the one of the stronger ones that we really wanted. And we really liked their process all the way through codification. They'll help us make sure that legally it's all more, it's all sound. It'll go through a legal review with them and it'll go through a legal review with us. So you guys were all invited with their proposal along with the other five. And with all the information we gathered, I would like to ask for you guys to let the city staff work through K L J to get the contract done. And then have Gigi sign off as the city manager so that we can begin the work as soon as the contract is done.
Where's K L J from?
They have offices all up and down the Midwest, they have a local manned office in Durango. But they do have offices all the way up into Montana.
You're satisfied, this is the best?
Of the ones we got, yes. I really wish I could cut and slice some of the, their proposals together because some had really strong portions and others, you know, always you got some that are stronger in some areas. But when it all came together, their package really did meet all of our needs as far as what we wanted. Their public engagement is, it's got multiple phases to it, it's got, it's got a bunch of different things that you can do. And I liked that, they have some online components, it's got in-person components. It tries to get other people to hold meetings, there's some really good stuff in that one, I really liked. And then the codification piece and the writing is really big for us. Our code is problematic, which is why we started down this process to begin with. So having some people with a lot of local experience, the company I believe has eighty-five years of experience writing it. Everybody on the staff is either a project manager or an American Planning Association certified planner. So there's really good quality staff members. On the public engagement side, they do bilingual. They're going to contract with either out of state or Montavista High School and use some local students to do some of the translations. If they can't get translators through those two organizations, they can do it in-house. But they will provide all of the services that we need, so yes, this is the best one we got.
Try to scroll through the two hundred and seventeen pages of the agenda.
There's, there's a few pages there in that package, yes.
What's the timeline for them, I'm trying to find theirs again.
So they, our project has to be completed and fully paid out by March of twenty-four. Their timeline would start in March, according to their schedule, and they would finish codification in January of twenty-four. So that gives us time to finish, do the final narratives, get all the invoices done and still close it out before our deadline to DOLA of twenty-four, or in March of twenty-four. And they came in at nine hundred, I'm sorry, ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and change was there.
City manager thing?
I'm excited. It's going to be a good deal.
You happy with the company?
Yes, sir.
In the future, give us more time to digest a hundred and fifty some pages of documents before you ask us to vote.
Well, I will definitely work on that, Counsel Lorenz. It was a compressed timeline based on the timeline DOLA gave us. That's one of the reasons we had to, with Christmas and when they awarded it, we have to have the contract awarded within ninety days. So it kind of put us in a little bit of a time crunch. So yeah, I would love, I'll work on that next time.
We'll, I was glad we were. Come to Jesus, maybe we're the planning commission or something.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to move to approve the consultant selection for IHOP, which is
K L J.
K L J Engineering, thank you.
And have the city manager sign.
And have the city manager sign.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve the IHOP grant to, or approve K L J Engineering and the city manager sign the paperwork. Is there any more discussion? Lorna?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the IHOP grant awarded to K L J Engineering and to allow City Manager Gigi Dennis to sign.
We're going to go over breakfast. This will be Anita. Discussion on accounts receivable for tax certification held by the county.
Mayor, Council, I wanted to discuss our accounts receivable for tax certification held by Rio Grande County. I'll give you a little bit of background, utility billing accounts that are at least ninety days past due have a minimum balance of a hundred and fifty are sent to the county treasurer each year in November. Then we reclass those accounts from utility billing to tax certifications. The amount held by the county on these accounts varies from two hundred dollars to up to twenty-one thousand. We have three different groupings within the city's books. We have GL accounts for the Rio Grande County Treasurer Assessments. We have miscellaneous accounts receivable and we have tax certifications. The GL accounts should balance with the tax certifications, which should also balance with the account that's held by the county. These accounts have not been reconciled for quite some time. So I took some time to get the accounts reconciled. And after putting together a comparison, I found a net amount of approximately nine thousand dollars that's not reflected in the county report or is on our books and the county reflects payments. So I would like your approval to write this balance off so the accounts will be reconciled and we can start fresh at a zero balance. This is one of the last adjustments I need to make before I finish the year end reports. And then hopefully I'll be able to get those to you at the next council meeting.
Do you have a sense of where that nine thousand dollars was misaccounted for or lost?
It varies, some of these accounts date back to two thousand and nine. That on our books are reflected as being sent to the county for a tax lane. I got a report from the county that showed all of the payments on all of the tax certifications that were sent for lanes. And they went back to two thousand. So I did a comparison of what we had on our books compared to what they had for payments. And like I said, the net, the net balance is about nine thousand dollars to write off. And like I said, some of those are from two thousand and nine, some of them are from yeah, two thousand and nine, ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen.
So these nine thousand dollars came in and we just don't know what happened to it?
No, no, we have nine thousand on our books that we say, that, that, that we say we're going to receive. But it's been sitting there for, you know, years and we're really not going to receive it. And the county's not going to collect because either they've already collected and cleared the account and it wasn't done here.
We're not talking about cash, talking about accounting. We're not talking about cash, we're talking about counting.
Right, and yeah.
Right, and so it's, it's more of a, kind of like a software glitch for a communication where the county received it. We didn't get the information, so it's still sitting there, but the bulk of the funds was all already absorbed. And, and I just want to say thanks to Anita, I mean, she had all of these worksheets and all of these numbers and she's like, should I make them all copies of this? And I said, no.
Bless you.
I know, right? You guys love looking at my numbers.
But she's really done a really great job in going back and to get this reconciled and then get the books cleaned up so that it zeros them out.
So it's accurate.
Yeah.
I make the motion that you write off the nine thousand dollars and balance the books.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded to write off the tax certification held by the county. Is there any discussion? Lorna?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve to write off balance of tax certification in amount of nine thousand dollars in balance books.
I really appreciate your persistence on taking care of the finances in the city, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Staff Proposals, Reports in Action, City Clerk. And Deputy City Clerk. City Clerk and Deputy Clerk.
Oh, sorry.
You're doing very well training.
It's great, it's great, I'm loving it.
So we just wanted to bring to you tonight the twenty twenty review of the city clerk's office.
Where's all the theme music?
So twenty twenty-two. Montavista City Clerk's Office and Municipal Court. Our mission of the city clerk's office is to both provide quality support and assistance to city council and to the citizens of Montavista. This includes maintaining excuse me, maintaining a courteous service oriented team of professionalism that will join hands in partnership with the community and staff.
So the history of the city clerk, of the city clerk, the role of the city clerk originates back to the ancient civilian civilizations when scribes would document the business of government. Civilization involves the proper execution and operation of government to truly serve the people's needs. And city clerks have always helped record the proceedings of government to ensure that its legal processes are executed properly. As the, as the United States has grown over the past two centuries from a handful of towns to thousands of modern cities. We know today the role of the city clerk has evolved along with the growth of our population and shifts in technological progress. Today, the city clerk is literally, literally the glue that holds many cities together. Through the records, management documentation of city council meetings and public facing service roles. City clerks are wearing many hats. The role of the city clerk comes with the weight of much responsibility, reverence and service that makes it a job unlike any other in the United States. I feel rightfully honored and privileged to serve your city in this role.
So Lorna and I, I promoted Lorna to deputy city clerk last year. She has definitely proved that she can take the role of deputy city clerk. And I'm very proud to have her and we both are very proud to serve as this role. So some of the responsibilities is documenting and facilitating city council meetings. Document and publish ordinance and resolutions. Public records management. Records retention management. Contract bidding and request for proposals coordination.
Epic filings, elections, planning and zoning. N P I O's municipal court clerk. License permits and payments.
So that's just a, we just wanted to make sure that you all are aware of the roles that the city clerk plays and the different things that we deal with on a day to day basis. For twenty twenty-two municipal, the Montavista Municipal Courts, we had three hundred and fifty-seven cases. Fifty-nine bench warrants were issued. Thirty-two deferred sentences. Forty-nine dismissals. Two thousand one hundred and ninety-three in restitution collected. Seven thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to PD surcharge was collected. And a total of forty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-one payments collected. I just want to go back and explain the deferred sentencing. The deferred sentencing are on traffic violations. So those deferred sentencing, if they have a clean traffic record, then the city attorney and the judge will agree upon deferring the case. Which means that record is put on the shelf for six months. As long as that defendant doesn't receive a ticket in four points or greater, a violation four points or greater. Then that ticket goes away and points aren't reported to the Colorado Department of Motor Vehicle. Dismissal of cases. The reason that some of the cases would be dismissed would be a ticket was given for no insurance provided. So somebody was pulled over due to a bad taillight, they didn't have insurance on them. But they were able to provide insurance and the state law allows for us to dismiss those cases. So those cases were dismissed. Some other dismissals would be if the city attorney finds not accurate information or something of that nature where he would recommend dismissal of the case.
So last year we had three hundred and, oh, three hundred and fifty-six businesses. Ten to fifteen home base businesses. Three hundred and sixty-two vendor permits. Eighty-one contractors. Twelve tobacco license. Eleven liquor license. Four special event license holders.
So on this, we had a total of three hundred and fifty-six businesses that we actually permitted for twenty twenty-two. The three hundred and twenty-six vendors, those are permits that have been given out to individual vendors throughout all the events for the city of Montavista. So Crane Festival, ad conference, the Christmas Bazaar, any event that is held, they have to have a vendor's license. Twenty twenty-three started off with a bang. We have eight new businesses, Progressive Service is a roofing company. Simple Serene is a counseling center, studio, and I'm not even going to try to pronounce her last name. Pence Pediatrics, Tomorrow's Bread, Mountain Girl Play and Pure Ethics, and then Tina Killian, who is a massage therapist. They are all located either on Adams Street, Washington or First Avenue. With your approval tonight, we have one tasting permit now within the city. We have completed the plastic bag fee information flyer and have that out to all of our residents. And we are currently updating and adding new pages to the city website. We continually on a daily basis answer questions, concerns, comments and post things onto our social media Facebook page. And we currently have twenty-one new court cases.
Twenty-five now, and three more to me. The city clerk's office is a very busy office and not only do we do our daily job duties, but we handle all interruptions throughout the day regardless of the regardless of the daily interruptions, the staff of the city clerk's office manage, manages to meet every customer with a smile and the willingness to listen. Manage manages to meet every customer with a smile and the willingness to listen and help each and every customer in every way possible to meet their needs. We are always willing to help out other departments anytime they need assistance, we are a busy office and have a lot going on, but we always make time for you.
That's it, we just wanted to update you on the city clerk's office.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate what you guys do. Public works. Not even gonna try to follow that one up, so um there's no written report tonight for city council. Um twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-three has started out with a bang, um we've got all of our year-end closeouts pretty much completed. Um starting on twenty twenty-three stuff to get reports done and annual permits and stuff out. And reports, um really don't have a lot to report on. Um pretty much business as usual, we haven't had any snow, so there's really not a whole lot going on as far as that. We're doing some odds and ends and keeping up with some park maintenance and things of that nature. Um utilities are still working, we did have five new taps. We've got all of those all completed in January, December, so those are all done, those are all in terror of the soul. They've got, my understanding, they have seven more applicants, so they're going through their system. So hopefully somewhere in the neighborhood of June or July, there will be seven more homes that'll start. Um self-help homes, so that'll be good for our ci- our city, so we're doing that. Um still having some supply issues, I did go ahead and purchase thirty new meters just so we'd have it. Cause our our supplier is twelve weeks out on meters, which is absolutely ridiculous.
That's not much, sorry.
It's it's nuts.
Try by transfer.
Some of it's over, some of our stuff is over a year out.
Yeah, so we are.
So so it's it's.
Smart move.
Yeah, it's it's absolutely crazy. Um we did in a really roundabout way, found out that we are still in the runnings for that. Um reconnecting communities federal grant that I put in at the end of um twenty twenty-two. So we are still in the running for that, at least for now, so that's a federal grant, it's a nationwide grant, so we'll see what we go with that. But as of this week, we are still in the running, so that's good.
Awesome.
Open it up for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
PB.
Good evening again. Uh in your packet is uh my annual report, I like to just kind of give you a recap of what we did for the year before. Um and I'm not gonna go over all the, one things I wanted to add this year was uh was the, we, I had Josh Hill who's. I I call him a wizard, I don't wanna call him a nerd, but he's very computer savvy. Uh and he's very good at like analyzing data and stuff, so I had him kind of break it down a little bit on uh where we were last year and stuff. So one thing I'm really pleased with is that our violent crimes, which would be like robbery, homicide um and things like that. The the so the FBI has crimes broke down into part one, part two, part one are are the more serious crimes and stuff like that, part two are the less serious crimes. Um but unfortunately auto theft, and and there's gonna be a lot of legislation this year on the auto theft. And there needs to be in Colorado because this is crazy that we lead the nation in auto theft. And that's no different here in in San Luis Valley, we went up a hundred and fourteen percent in auto thefts in Mona Vista last year. Now granted, we went from seven to fifteen, but the but the point is is that auto theft is such a splur, it's it's completely. There's so much of it in Colorado and and a lot of it has to do with legislation, uh really, in my opinion. Uh and pardon my French, piss poor legislation that's been passed the last several years. Um I I mean, you can steal a car and we're gonna book you and you're gonna be released on a personal cognitive bond. You're gonna get out, you're gonna steal another car, we're gonna do that and we're just gonna play this kind of like Groundhog Day over and over and over. So I know even the Attorney General has is was talking about this in in uh some briefings that he's done and and there's gotta be more done about auto theft. Um auto theft is horrendous in Colorado. And again, like I said, we, the San Luis Valley was not immune to that and we weren't in Mona Vista. So we had a hundred and fourteen percent increase in in auto theft last year, went from seven to fifteen, those maybe seem like small numbers, but for a small community. That's substantial. Um the biggest issue with this is, though, it is so preventable. The majority of those were the car, the vehi- the keys were left in the vehicle or the vehicle's left running. And and I get it, I we live in a rural community where it's like, yeah, just gonna run in here quick and grab something and I feel bad. I won't name her, but a um a a girl who is a hard worker, nineteen years old, she does that, pulls up to her mom's house, runs in to uh. Grab some food, two minutes and her car is gone. Uh auto theft is a lot of time is a crime of opportunity, just like the thefts from vehicles, people leave stuff on the seats, they leave. They leave a gun in plain sight or they don't lock their cars or something like that. So we're gonna, me and Josh are working on some campaigns to kind of really push that uh through social media and stuff to um. See what we can do because boy, if we can reduce the the property crimes, our crime stats will really uh really drop. So but again, that you know, the violent crimes were down twelve and a half percent last year, is is uh is is great. Um the other thing I I think I've and I've talked a little bit about this and I will give uh. Mayor Protem Segala is the one that kind of, I guess, made me really look at this when he had made a mention about the police department here. Uh a couple of months ago, about how proud he was about the fact the way we were treating people and stuff. Fact that we reduced use of force fifty-seven percent last year, um I I think that's pretty outstanding. Um uh I'm I'm extremely proud of that and and that's really the officers, but I will tell you, it started with some training. That we did last year about de-escalation, but and basically it's like learning how to talk to people and to um. When you know, two of us are are on a call and one of them, you're like, that's probably not what we should be doing. So you can step in and just tell that other officer basically to step away, no questions asked, it's not reported. Um you know, they're not coming to me and saying, well, I had to step in and keep Victor from uh running his mouth or something, you know, like that. So that's that's the premises behind it is, it's uh it's called ABLE training, active bystandership where anybody can step in. And it doesn't matter if it's me, and I will tell you, it's actually happened to me, uh I I was, this guy was just like. Going off on me and stuff and I'm like, oh man, this guy is sorry, and I could feel myself getting, you know, I've been to this a long time. But one of the other officers just literally like stepped in front of me and like put his hand and was like, and without even saying anything, he took over the conversation and then. Was able to de-escalate it, so that's kind of the premise behind it and it's it's worked. Um so much so that they asked me to be on the state board for ABLE because there's a big push for this. I I mean, I'm not gonna go into details about what happened in Memphis, but that right there is a prime example of. Some good at de-escalation training could have definitely prevented that from happening. So um other than that, then there's a a breakdown on auto theft in there and then just our our overall crimes. So that you can uh have a look at that when you got time, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So Chief, do we issue like a put a little card, a a warning card on. Cars that are being warmed up in driveways, just saying, hey, notice your cars.
Well, so there's actually state law that says you can't, um well, you can't leave the keys in the vehicle. Now, they they've changed the law because like uh I have a truck where I can s- remote start it, that's totally legal. Um but you, the old cars, I I don't, you know, I think like my Challenger, I have to have a a actual key. I can't leave that running in the yard without me being in the vehicle. So you can't leave the keys in the vehicle, but if you can remote start it and that, there's usually in March. Uh you'll see this statewide campaign, it's called the Puffer, the Puffer Campaign, and that's what that's about is people leave their cars running and then. You know, somebody jumps in, I and we've had two of those in the last month here, somebody's starting the vehicle and. Lo and behold, the cars are gone, now we've recovered, I think we've recovered both of them. One of them, uh uh Twyla Martinez, Officer Martinez recovered it within just like a couple of hours and stuff, so. Uh you know, we and we've gotten better about trying to put that out, but there is, we can do that and drive around and put that back. That's part of that campaign in March, is the Puffer Campaigns, saying, hey, don't do this, I do. I get it, we live in a cold place, I I don't think we should be writing tickets to people for uh leaving their cars running, but. Watch your damn car.
I don't think anybody should be blamed for their stuff being stolen.
I agree.
But but that's the whole legislation, but it would be cool if you had a little car screwed up and said, aren't you glad I'm a cop, didn't take your car? Because that shows that that would actually show them, hey, somebody walked up to my car, put this on my windshield and walked away. And I didn't know it, yes, I'm glad it was not.
Or see me running.
But yeah, I mean, that that would just be a reminder of of just how easy. Because if you hadn't been a cop, that that would.
Yeah, I I I am gonna hear you say that though, you're right, I don't think you should uh be charged for, you know.
Oh no, if I leave my house open, I should not be charged if someone breaks into it, I understand, it's a dumb thing to do.
Right, but I.
But it's not, it shouldn't be a crime.
I agree, the 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 solution is is keep your hands in your pocket when, don't be taking other people's stuff, that's the.
Right.
We know that's not how it works.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
George, thank you, and one thing I want to say is, talking about ABLE, you are a good leader. Because you brought a program to your officers and they, you taught them well enough to know and they're comfortable enough with you. To know that they could do that to you as well, so.
I appreciate that, and absolutely.
Very good job, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Well, and if you haven't had a chance, it's on page one ninety-nine in your packet and it really is an interesting read. What the chief and and Officer Hill put together.
I'll get to it, I'm. IT department. Trying to pull rank over there, Christian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, gonna try and keep it short and sweet as usual, but January was still a bit busy month for us, a little bit slow as well. But uh we were able to get the city planner's computer in, so DJ has his computer fully up and running. Everything on it is customized to what he needs for the time being and as time goes on, we're expecting that we're going to need to add more to him. But for now, he is fully up and functional. The council chambers is of course starting to get Zoom integration, video feed is set up evidently as we know of set up the uh camera, which is a good perk of having Zoom integration. Uh we are working on balancing the audio side still, so you might see us just tinkering here and there a little bit with it through council, tonight hasn't been too bad. But I know previously we had to come out and adjust slightly from the mixer. But uh as for the next part of this, we're gonna be redoing the visuals of the council chambers, so instead of it being a projector, we will be putting in a flat screen TV over here for better viewing. So that way, everyone should be able to see more comfortably, it shouldn't be too much of a hassle, light shouldn't be an issue for us anymore. And then from there, um laptop, moving on to the next subject, we have the laptops set up for Mr. Lauren Howard, of course. Good? Good, okay, good to know, and then we got our new SAN in, which is a storage area network. That's pretty much where all the city's data relies on, that's where all our financial data is, how everything works. We're able to get that in and install and replace old one, which has given us some problems throughout the past year and I'm pretty sure longer, according to Christian, more than positive. And then we were able to do our IT retreat over the previous weekend, we were able to discuss some of the upcoming projects that we want to and just discussion about our department in general. Any questions?
You guys do a great job in the background, I appreciate you and I know Jim's listening, so thank you for your team, appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
The sound on Zoom was excellent tonight.
Yeah, I I was anxious to hear what you thought, Jason.
Yeah, I could understand everything you guys said.
That's great.
It's good to hear.
Awesome.
You guys have a good night.
Thank you. City manager report, that's a big old piece of paper.
Not too bad. One thing I wanted to to ask is, we do have several things that we need to do work sessions on. And instead of trying to. You know, stick them in on weeks where we have city council members meetings, if we could alternate that. And then like every other Monday, we have a work session. And I was wondering if Monday night, we've got one one icky on Monday. The challenge is on some of these other nights, we have either urban renewal or planning and zoning and some of that kind of stuff. So if we can kind of find an evening that works for all of you, or maybe we make it every other Thursday night. So you just know every Thursday you've got a meeting.
Trouble for those who are soon to be retirees and wanna take a couple of weeks off, but.
We can let you do that.
Except for Thursdays. Just a thought.
Well, we get this old Zoom thing going, I'm I'm ain't glad that Jason said the sound system's working great. Cause I couldn't hear a darn thing the other night when we were in executive session.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm okay with either either Mondays.
Thursdays are better for me.
So things are changing for me, so I honestly, if Thursday's gonna work, I'll just have to make it work somehow. So whatever day, we'll try to make it work.
Okay. And there may be some times when, you know, of course you guys can be absent and I can fill you in one-on-one and just. Catch up on what was, the discussion was. Uh council member Lorenz has has expressed um. Some, I don't know how to say this, Jason, you, he he has expressed some. That he would does not think some of our federal funds should go towards new water meters. But instead, we should be looking at that through our water enterprise and that cost should be absorbed by our. Users, which I agree, but we do have some federal dollars that if we can help offset some of that. And help with a grant match, it could really benefit our citizens. And we had, we know we've got massive leaks in our system, we do lose water, which is meaning lost revenue for us. And so the energy efficiency is great and we had a um consultant come in and a presentation today. That I'd like to do a work session with you and he compliments what is, Rob has talked to you all about in the past. On some of these better systems that can save time, labor and time. And equipment usage and make our system more efficient. And so they would become, one of them lives in Albuquerque and the other one lives in Carbondale. And so that'll take a little bit of of coordinating, but I just think that you guys should at least listen to the presentation. And then decide if if we want to go forth looking at the possibility of rate increases in order to make up the difference. Or if we can use some of the federal dollars as a leverage for grant funding and what we need to do. The basketball courts, they are going to be a a thorn in in our foot. So the, they sent out an RFP. We have had several people call and question, but the RFP closed on January the twenty-fifth. And we did not get any official proposals, so I've asked staff to go ahead and let's send it out for another month. And you know, maybe it was too much with the end of the year and January and and whatever. But um we've even got somebody here locally that has called and inquired and is interested then in submitting something. So what's. What about the manufacturer, weren't they gonna, didn't they have some money that they wanted to, and then we decided we wanted to get competitive and did we lose that out on that? I can't answer that, I don't, I don't know Martha, um. I don't know where we are on that one, so I'll just ask, we can get back to you. Can we, can we call them back and say, okay, fine, we'll take your offer? Yeah, let's, I think we should go ahead and and see, especially since we've got somebody local. We can, we are doing everything we can to encourage folks. We can, we are doing everything we can to encourage folks to go ahead and take a look and you know, with the cost of everything else right now, you would think that someone would say, whoa, here's an opportunity for a real bargain.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're still being optimistic. Don't forget, February the sixth, that's Monday. We've got a lunch with the county commissioners, it'll be at noon at Nino's. And um, I did hear from Commissioner Glover today, and they're meeting, I think with the Attorney General, you know, is he in town?
Yes, for the DA's discussion.
Yes, for the DA's discussion, so um, anyway, he said that he'd let me know if they thought that they couldn't make it at the meeting, he said, when it's supposed to end, there shouldn't be any problem, but he said just giving us a heads up, and I said, fine, so we could still have a nice lunch just city council, um, Nita will already have it posted that we're gonna be meeting, so whatever you guys wanna do.
To that point, could I could interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
You asked it for a work session sooner than later.
Yeah.
Regarding nepotism.
I think you've.
I I'm enormously I don't know. Sensitive to the police department's issues, you know, that's a big deal to me. You know, could, you know, could we do a meeting before lunch or after lunch on Monday? I'm just a suggestion, I'm just trying to.
I I I'm fine with it, and 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 my reason, I I I knew that we were not going to have this tomorrow, but if we're it makes it a little bit harder to kick the can down the road if you're gonna be held accountable the next day. So, that's why I said that, I knew it wasn't wrong, but I throw it out there anyway.
I'm the only one that works on Fridays, usually.
Well, you know. May have to change. And I'm not talking about staff, I'm talking about.
If we wanna take an hour to.
We we need to get on that quickly, that that's a, that's a biggie.
If it works for everybody.
What, Jason?
Jason, would that work for you at the commissioner meeting?
No, I'm booked up that day, I'll just, I was just planning on having lunch with you guys and leaving. I can do it at night, any night next week, but I can't do it during the daytime.
Well, and we're gonna take into consideration that that conference is going on next week as well.
That's true.
Right.
So, we could do it, uh, um.
That conference isn't at night, though, is it?
It finishes up about five thirty-six.
Okay.
Once I have a I don't wanna say happy hour, what do they call it?
Social hour.
Social hour.
Social hour.
Thank you.
Seventh and eighth, did you say?
Seventeenth, yeah.
Yeah, and Tuesday, we have uh Urban Renewal Authority.
We have what Tuesday?
Urban Renewal Authority.
At three.
URA.
After work, five thirty.
So I think, I think what you're saying is you you'd like to deal with the whole, with with what we table tonight sooner rather than later as well.
Your concern, and I'm.
I'm concerned, I'm extremely concerned.
Yeah, I I I get it, I'm just trying to find it.
And yes, I'm willing to to meet tomorrow night for a work session if we need to, or tomorrow during the day. I'm willing to, I don't know that. I'm willing to meet on Saturday or Sunday, I don't care.
Next Thursday?
Is that the soonest we can get it, is next Thursday?
So I might, I so I might be gone next Thursday and Friday and Saturday, next weekend, so. I know I'm, I know I'm gonna be gone uh anniversary, so we just plan stuff already.
What's going on Monday and Tuesday night?
Monday, Monday would be it, cuz Tuesday, URA.
Monday works for me, but realize, we can't vote on anything till the next council meeting anyway. This is a work session, this is just for information, so pushing it early doesn't mean anything on when we can actually act on it.
Is there any way that we could call a meeting that we could act on it?
We can call a special meeting, but then we're gonna, no, I think we need to have a work session.
Yeah.
We can, I mean, in all reality, like Jason said, we can't vote on it until the meeting and then and and I'm sure Chief would back me on this, in all reality, if whatever happens to that is, he's not gonna have anybody within two weeks, right, Chief? Okay. Monday evening?
Seven o'clock.
Five?
Good me?
Yep.
Five o'clock work, Jason?
Yeah, that works for me.
Everybody, Monday at five o'clock?
Okay.
Are you gonna want any legal input on that, Mayor? Um, yes.
So the lunch is at?
Does that work Tuesday?
Twelve, right? Well, I have to be, it's watch at six thirty, uh, if you could do it just a little bit earlier, I'd give me a little more leeway. If you're talking about the six next Monday?
Yes, five, they said five.
Yeah, five, so I mean, um. Yeah, I have your thoughts, and we'll put you right up at the front to discuss it, and then you can go.
I was about to give you some thoughts when the motion was made too, but that's fine.
Would, did that work for you?
I can do it at five, I I'll I'll be able to do it for about a half an hour or something like that, yeah.
Does that work for everybody else?
This coming Monday, I'll make it work, I have no idea, but I'll make it work, I don't have a datebook here, so.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we did have a little vandalism on the building um last night.
Which building?
On this building, they broke out the window on where you enter for the courts. And um, we've identified the person off of our video cameras. So there is a warrant out, and the department is act- is actively seeking that individual. So, yeah. Um, I, to Nita, uh, talking about tastings of spirits.
Tonight?
The, um, well, here's just a little fun history fact. When I served in the legislature, I was the one that carried the legislation that allowed the making of spirits in Colorado. And my um, house rep was Jim Snook. And that's relevant here in another minute, but um, this was all due because of the San Luis Valley. There was a water bottling company out on the west side of Alamosa County that was bottling water, and they wanted to start making potato vodka, and it was two guys from Vail. Well, they never, they never made their vodka, it never took off, um, that part of it. But to see that it has turned into a billion-dollar industry for the state, I think is pretty darn cool. And Representative Snook just passed away this week. So he was um, he was out of Alamosa, he was quite a horse horseman, he was served on the State Fair Board. He um, passed away in Colorado Springs, but the service, he must have been from the, from the uh, Grand Junction, Palisades-ish uh area, cuz that's where they're, they're putting him to rest, but it was kind of appropriate to tie all that in tonight.
That's interesting.
Love history.
So, thank you, do you have any questions?
Ma'am, thank you for what you do.
Yes, thank you very much for.
We keep you very busy.
I I'd like to.
Thank you for putting up.
I'd like to make a consideration.
Yes, sir.
The city manager has a microphone right there, why don't we make her get up there? A little bit nagging.
Well, it depends, it just depends, cuz we've had her do it from there at times.
You've always done it that way, is that the answer?
Wherever she wants to do it from, I'm good with that, but they can't see her on the camera from over there, I don't think.
Well, and since since our microphones don't enhance our voices in here, it's hard, and, you know, tell me to get it here now if you want to. But it's hard for me to hear her when she's over there. It it is very hard for me to hear, I I mean, this is not a real acoustically great room, if you think about it.
I said manager, that did not ask me to make that request.
I I know, but.
I just wanna be clear about that, that's an own observation.
If if our microphones would not only go into the recording doohickey, but would also enhance our voices in here, I would be great with with everybody just staying where they are.
I think with the enhancements that they've done tonight, that sounds pretty good. I mean, Jason, can, have you heard us all all right all night?
Yeah, I was able to hear you tonight.
All right, thank you. We'll go to council committee, city commissions and council reports, and Jason, you're up first, bud.
It's the usual, I have nothing to contribute tonight.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Victor?
Um, I'm thinking I really don't have a whole lot. Um, just be safe out there.
Mr. Howard?
Well, yeah, I I wanna just continue to express, um, you know, I I I'm torn on the whole nepotism policy, I'm enormously sensitive to our police department. You know, I I I hope we will find a way, you know, to make it all work. And and I guess that's, that's my goal, was to make it work.
Good.
Other than that.
That's it?
And I guess that's it for the night, so.
I appreciate that, though, thank you. Martha?
I'm gonna save some stuff for a while.
Okay.
And just make one big report, and that that way you can say, you outta here yet?
I'll give you three minutes like everybody else.
No, I'm saving, I just put my three minutes in the bank, I'm saving this.
Can't bank it.
Yes, I can, I just said good.
I will be short and sweet, um, be safe out there, stay warm, keep an eye out for your neighbors. Um, I did wanna make a comment, um, I had an elderly neighbor pass away uh, a couple, three weeks ago, and he was a World War Two veteran. He was going into Pearl Harbor when it was attacked, and they pushed his, told him, Turner, get that boat out of here or ship out of here, and he did not, they did not see the battle because they got, told him to get out. But he was eight days shy of being a hundred and one years old, so he was an incredible man. I got to sit and listen to him tell some of the stories, and it was, he's, that was awesome, so respectfully, keep an eye out for your neighbors, and then one more thing I wanted to say is uh, I was watching the news the other night. And I won't tell you what news channel, but uh they were arguing in the White House at one of their fine meetings about saying the Pledge of Allegiance. And it really aggravated me. Like beyond means, and I thought, you know what, I'm so proud of our city, I'm so proud of this council that we can sit here and we will say the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will stand here and say a prayer, and not even bat an eye about it. So with that being said, I thank you all for being here tonight, we will adjure uh recess this meeting until February sorry. Sixteenth, six P M. Thank you for being here.